Good evening. Thank you for your patience and welcome to the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees' Monthly Board Meeting for December 12, 2022. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Deambrosio.
Here.
Trustee Mozepp.
Here.
Trustee Pachakoff.
Here.
Trustee Thorp.
Here.
Trustee Watts, here. Chair McDonald.
Here. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes for the following Board of Trustees' Meeting, regular Board of Trustees' Meeting, November 21, 2022. Board of Trustees' Policy Committee Meeting, November 21, 2022. Make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Deambrosio, supported by trustee Barry. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, may I have a roll call?
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Deambrosio.
Yes.
Trustee Mozepp.
Yes.
Trustee Pachakoff.
Yes.
Trustee Thorp.
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. Chair McDonald.
Yes. Next item, please.
President's items.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon, trustees. I apologize for delaying our departure from the gate here for a few minutes. I have several items I want to talk to you about, but the first is not a happy event, but it is an event where I want to commemorate a one-year anniversary in front of the loss of one of our teammates in the Welcome Center. You may recall, we lost one of our teammates there named Tamika, and I have to tell you, it was a terrible loss for the team there, and we still think about her and honor her memory. I also want to say that the president of the SSA Union, President Winless, I came in so quickly, I don't know if she's here, but if she were here, I'd thank her for reminding me of our teammates passing, and I just want her and her teammates and all the HFC family to know Tamika is still in our thoughts and prayers. Shifting gears, this week is Exam Week for HFC students, which, if you remember Exam Week from your times there, it is one of stress relief and...
Lots of coffee.
Lots of coffee. And in December, it is also one of, once you are complete with exams, you have the end of the year festivities in whatever way your culture or your family celebrates them. And so I want to say to students, welcome to Exam Week, best of luck in Exam Week, and happy holidays. Throughout the month of December, many of us celebrate different traditions, and I'm often on the airwaves, as you probably have seen in email and video, helping our communities learn about and celebrate our different ways of celebrating the end of the year. And for my family, it is Christmas, but for many other parts of our community, there are different parts of this time of year that are joyous and celebratory, and so I'm looking forward to that. I hope you trustees have a warm and safe holiday season, and as well with the students and staff at Henry Ford College. As we transition into the new year, we've decided we're going to change the way we're doing First Fridays, and I know some of you have attended First Fridays. And the last First Friday was in December a couple weeks ago, I think a little bit more than a week ago. And we'll be doing First Fridays beginning in February of 2023, and we'll be doing those in person and at different locations around the campus to help those come to be with us and see other parts of the campus, which I'm excited about. I'm also hearing a lot of feedback from the community that takes advantage of and utilizes the opportunity for First Fridays about possible other tweaks and changes that we're going to do. The reason why we're starting First Fridays in the new year in February is because, you'll recall, we have historically done the State of the College event in January, and I'm looking forward to later this week announcing a change in how we'll do that in January, which we're very excited about. A couple of announcements and happenings around Henry Ford College that I want to bring your attention to. I do not know if I saw President Rader. Is President Rader here? If he were here, I would congratulate him on what I'm told was the election of the AFT Local 1650 Presidential Election, in which he was elected to a full term. I also want to tell you about the event we described as Pizza and a Play, which was having HFC students and staff and some of your former colleagues. And community members come and have pizza here in the atrium of this building, and then move on to the play that was the first production since the pandemic in our Fine Arts Building, which my family and I enjoyed. And we had former trustee and former employee Dr. Michael Mead and his wife, a former instructor here, the chair of the Foundation Board, Denise McDonald, was here. It was a great event. And in the new year, I'll attempt to do additional events where we bring ourselves together and show both the value of the community college and also the value of being together. Another event that showcased some of that was something that I'm really excited and thankful to say I had the help of some of you all on, and that was just about three or four days ago on Friday, we had an event to commemorate decades of service by our congressperson, having the last name Dingle. Now, of course, there was John Dingle who had that job for many, many years, and then, of course, his wife Debbie Dingle was recently our congressperson. And of course, you know that the state of Michigan redrew the congressional lines and caused Congresswoman Dingle to not have her district encompass Dearborn, and so we used Friday to commemorate her years of service for the college. And I was thankful to have Chair McDonald give comments and thanks to Congresswoman Dingle. I was also thankful to have Secretary Watts give comments introducing our new congressperson, Rashida Tlaib, who's also been in Congress for some years, but now takes on Dearborn as her district. And then it was a special pleasure to have trustee Thorp give Congresswoman Dingle an honorary Associate's Degree from Henry Ford College. The event was a great opportunity to be together, show why we are proud about Henry Ford College, why we're thankful for our representation in Congress, and how that has been something we have been really, really lucky to have, and we're excited to continue with what Congresswoman Dingle and Congresswoman Tlaib promised was going to be a double congressperson for us. And if you know me, you know I'll make sure that they honor that commitment, and we're excited to have had those trustees I just mentioned help us. I thank you personally for helping us honor and showcase what it means to have a relationship between the college and the congressperson. That leads to the event that we had just today, and that was at Wayne State University, and I was excited to have some of your teammates join us here, I'm sorry, at Wayne State. We had trustees Pelichkov, Secretary Watts, and trustee Barry there with us while we were announcing the next in our Learn Forward agreements, where students who graduate from Henry Ford College will have automatic admission at Wayne State University and not have any question as to whether 60 credits that they earned here at Henry Ford College will transfer over to Wayne State University. Each time I talk about these events, I speak about those that I think on our team deserve the most credit, and I will do that again today, but I'll be a bit truncated in one of those, and for good reason. But one that I won't truncate is Kathy Dimitriou, who helped us organize the logistics of how we were going to do this Wayne State announcement. And if you ask her, and if she's truthful, she'll tell you, planning an event with me is a little difficult because things change a lot and often. She also planned the Debbie Dingle event that was fantastic. But on these Learn Forward announcements, we've done two of them now, the idea of getting this message out and showcasing Henry Ford College, both its value to the community and frankly, the brand, which has real value here, that's the job of Rhonda DeLong, and she works tirelessly at it. She's very, very effective at it. You've seen, I've showed you some of you trustees, in fact, all of you trustees, a lot of the work that's gone into that, already delivering results in earned media and social media showing our value. She does a very good job at that, and my expectation is we're going to continue to push on this as Henry Ford College, the place where you can come, get a good associate degree, and have a guaranteed path to a meaningful four-year degree that simply puts us in our own class now that we've got two of those. So I do thank Vice President DeLong and her team for doing excellent work. The other person who deserves frankly, the lion's share of the credit here is Dr. Michael Nealan, who is the brain behind these ideas to get. And the real value here is that students can get a very high-quality education here at Henry Ford College and not lose any of that value as they transition to a university. And we had three students speak today, and I would invite you to talk to trustees Watts and Pelichkov and Barry. It was touching to see the different types of students and the way we touch their lives. Now, some of them won't be a surprise to you because they've been at the podium and talked to you, but it really did showcase what you all allow us to do on your behalf here at Henry Ford College. But it simply would not be possible without the expertise and the hard work of Dr. Michael Nealan. I could go on and on, but the truth is, I've asked him to give you a presentation on some of the things he's doing on our strategic plan, because you'll recall that part of the strategic plan is to give students what we believe every community college student in Michigan should have, which is a guaranteed path. If they put in the work, they should take all the work that they do here at Henry Ford College, and they shouldn't have to ask for permission to take it to the next step, which is at a university. And I really feel like I'll steal some more of his thunder if I say anything more on that, except to say that in a minute, Dr. Nealan is going to be giving you presentations, and one of the two things he's spearheading is this idea of Learn Forward, with the "for" as the forward. So I'll leave it to him after the next items on your agenda to talk about that. But I just want you to know, I would be going on and on and on about the work Dr. Nealan has done, and I'm not, because I want him to tell you about it. But in the back of your mind, I want you to hear my voice when he's saying the things that he's doing and the things that we're doing at Henry Ford College. I want you to remember that this is the work of a real expert on this work, and I can tell you, as his colleague and as your president, I'm in debt to his effort. So I hope you hear me too, Dr. Nealan, when you're presenting, because we've made two really great presentations publicly, one in University of Michigan Dearborn and one today at Wayne State University. And just by the unlucky fate, Dr. Nealan has not been able to attend. And he really would be there if he had any choice, but he hasn't been able to be there to attend. So I need you to know, part of this opportunity for him to present tonight is to say, you know, you haven't had, and he doesn't need it, he doesn't look for it, but I want him to have it. I want him to have the opportunity to talk about his work, because these things put HFC in its own class, and we simply wouldn't be there without Dr. Nealan. So, I told you I truncated my comments a bit, but it looks like I didn't. I'm just so proud to be Dr. Nealan's teammate.
You're still a work of progress.
Yes, yes, that's true, that's true. So I tried to talk fast, because I know you have a long agenda, both here and next, and I am now, I'm done unless you have any questions for me, Madam Chair and Madam Secretary.
Anyone? No. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements.
Thank you, President Cavalluna, Chair McDonald, and members of the board. I want to express my gratitude for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Zina Jidehau. I'm from Westland, Michigan. Along with my coworkers, Mark Roby and Elena Kondracik, I serve as the Transfer Success Coordinator for the Honors Program. I'm also an honors student who's received the President's Scholarship. I was granted membership in the Honors Society Phi Theta Kappa. I'm a first-generation college student and the oldest of five siblings. I will be earning an associate degree in biology and hopefully transferring to the University of Michigan Ann Arbor. I have worked with the student community to plan events, volunteer opportunities, and transfer meetings with four-year institutions of higher learning. I found the Honors Program to be a great asset, and I'm thrilled to be a part of it. I'm grateful for attending HFC, and I'm confident in my decision. Thank you. Now, I'm pleased to read this month's Henry Ford College Board acknowledgements. Congratulations to the following students for their winning place in the biannual National AMA TYC Student Math League for Fall 2022. In first place, Hadis Suedan. Second place was a tie between Hadi Nasar and Ali Yasin. For the second acknowledgement will be December 13 to the 15th. The Office of Student Activities will hold its annual finals good luck event. This event will take place in various buildings on campus with volunteers handing out snacks and swag and wishing Henry Ford College students well on their finals. Everyone is invited to join in as we show our students they are appreciated and supported during their final exams. On January 16, 2023, Henry Ford College and the University of Michigan Dearborn will celebrate the 30th anniversary of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. This event is a one-day outreach activity that commemorates the philosophy and legacy of the late civil rights leader slash icon, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. This event is a collaborative effort between Henry Ford College and University of Michigan Dearborn students, faculty, and staff, as they volunteer their time to help local agencies through various projects. Volunteer opportunities are also available in person at remote locations and on the University of Michigan Dearborn campus. There are also volunteer opportunities that can be done at home and donated. Everyone is invited to take part in this annual event. Thank you for the opportunity to be this month's reader. Do you have any questions? I can answer you.
Trustee Watts.
So what are you planning on doing beyond when you attend the University of Michigan Ann Arbor? What are you planning on pursuing?
I plan on pursuing environmental research, hopefully. I'm very passionate about the environment. It's what I did my directed study about this semester, which was the effects of E. coli in drinking water from natural sources in Michigan, and I would love to be a part of environmental research.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let me add to that. We are all looking to your generation to help fix the mess that we've helped create. So thank you for your willingness and your passion for environmental services.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chair, Zina, good to see you.
Good to see you as well, sir.
Excellent, excellent job tonight. I enjoyed getting a chance to hear you describe the directed study that you just described to trustee Watts. It was fascinating, and because trustee Watts asked the question, I suspect other trustees have it in their mind. Why don't you add just a little bit more of what your directed study was and where you actually went to find specimen?
So for this semester, I worked on a directed study with Professor Jessica Mahoney. We did a study about the effects of E. coli as a biological indicator in Michigan natural water resources. So what I did for this study, I traveled to multiple locations all over Michigan, including Bell Isle, behind Henry Ford College, the Ridge River, and Independence Lake. And we took water samples, and we used a scientific method common in the community, which is where we filtered the natural water sources, and we cultured the filters in agar, and we compared the amount of E. coli that we see on the plates that we cultured to national and federal EPA standards. We use E. coli as a biological indicator because this pathogen in particular can lead to toxic blooms and disease in the community, and it's data that encourages cleaning efforts and hopefully encourages people to direct funds for environmental protection. And I was very grateful to work with the brilliant Dr. Mahoney to conduct this study.
And you were specifically looking at whether what the state and locals are telling us about...
Absolutely. One of the most interesting things I found in my study was, the first thing I did was looking on how water quality testing is conducted in Michigan, and I discovered it's only conducted in summer because Michigan officials operate on the assumption that there's more human contact during summertime and that cold winter temperatures will lead to the kill-off of bacteria. So basically, we don't have to worry about it because it'll be too cold for the bacteria to thrive. That was not the case in the data that I discovered. The E. coli blooms were very, very active in water sources because it's based on animal contamination. And yes, one of the results of my study was we should be conducting testing year-round and encouraging cleaning efforts because our natural sources are one of the best things that we have in Michigan, and we're very grateful for those. So yes, I do encourage that the state of Michigan should conduct testing year-round rather than operating on an assumption that is unfortunately false.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you expounding on that. I'm sure the trustees enjoyed it. For your benefit, trustees, the Honors Program has students give presentations much like this in what they called a symposium last week, which I had the pleasure of watching and seeing, and they're all happening simultaneously, and the Honors students have to kind of give a Shark Tank-type of pitch in a quick amount of time as you stroll past them. And of course, Zina had a wonderful presentation, but one of the things I really liked that added some context to all the information, you can tell she probably can say with her eyes closed and not her head, she knows it so well. But she had pictures of where she was taking the water samples. And if you haven't been to the backside of our campus, you can tell, getting down to the Rouge River is a little bit of a trick.
It's a steep slope.
Yeah, yeah, but she not only got the samples and got down there, had someone take a picture of her, which I'm glad, I'm glad I saw the picture after the fact, because the last thing I want to hear is you actually went into the Rouge River.
Water sampling techniques do require the researcher to go into the middle part of the river and still water to avoid contamination of algae or other things that may be in the water. And it was cold, but it was good.
Yeah, well, now I know you all the way went in, I probably shouldn't have asked. But then there was another picture where she was really, you were thoughtful beyond what I would expect. Well, I guess I should learn to expect that from you, because the other picture was a picture of you taking a water sample on Bell Isle with the skyline of Detroit behind you.
Yes.
So the person who was ignorant of the whole study, me, I could totally see what you were doing, and I just want to compliment you on the way you presented that here, but also in the symposium. That's not a question, it's just a high five.
Thank you, sir.
And you make us all proud.
I'm very grateful for Dr. Adam and the Honors Program and the Board of Trustees for allowing us these opportunities to conduct research at Henry Ford College, and it's the type of research that allows us to explore the hopefully futures we plan on being involved in, and it opens many opportunities, so I'm very grateful for that. Thank you.
I appreciate you thinking out of the box and not accepting the standard of, you know, collection only during the summertime and realizing that that could create an issue and finding out that it's...
It was intriguing to read about. It was very intriguing.
So thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone have any other things? We appreciate your time. You are not obligated to stay. It is finals weekend. I know there's lots going on.
Thank you.
So...
(applause)
Next item, please.
Special reports. Learn Forward. Vice President Nealan.
Appreciate that. Good evening, Chair McDonald, trustees, President Cavalluna. I don't know how I'm going to live up to the introduction. I do want to thank my friend Rhonda DeLong and Kathy. They do pull these events off, and it's just so inspiring to hear what our students hope to achieve. My experience is they usually blow past that. You just saw one who just blows past what they even set out to achieve. It's amazing. The only thing that I'd say with Rhonda is that, having missed these events, I've tried to convince her to kind of Photoshop Brad Pitt into these group pictures and just put my name there, and she's failed to do so. But no one would probably buy that anyway. All right. Well, with your permission, I'm going to take both of these reports, push them together, and flip them on their end, because they think it might make more sense to think first about students coming through the Gateway Course Experience, oftentimes those first general education courses or those first courses on their career and academic pathways. That's a critical moment for many people. That's one of the first classes or among the first courses they take in a college. And then we'll look at the students who not only make it through that, but go on, transfer seamlessly now from Henry Ford College, and head off to even more advanced study and achievements. You'll remember that one of our priorities in the strategic plan focused squarely on retention. It's not enough to look at student success from the lens of access anymore. How many students coming to our school, the more students, the more you're winning. It's not about that at all. It's whether or not we can get the students started on the right and most meaningful pathway, and that those pathways themselves are clear, accessible, and achievable. As you know, we only measure our success by the success of our students, so that achievement piece is very important for us to measure. We have two goals associated with this priority in our strategic plan, and I'll draw your attention to the second one. It is to decrease what we call DEWI, D-E-W-I, not Kevin Dewey, a decreased DEWI rates, and that stands for grades of a D, which does not transfer successfully to four-year institutions. E, which for us is a fail, withdrawals from a course, and incompletes, where the student has made it a good distance in the course, but for whatever reason has to take a timeout. Our goal in these college-level Gateway Courses was to decrease that number as much as we could within the scope of our two years. Now, a DEWI number, or as a DEWI rate, is going to be higher when we have more concentration of students achieving a D, an E, a W, or an I. In a sense, it's not achieving anything at all. It is an empty credit for which the student may have achieved nothing more than perhaps a bill. And so we want those rates to come down. We worked collaboratively with Vice President Gonko's team and drilled down into our data such that we can understand these DEWI rates for the top 50 high enrollment courses at this college. You have to understand that that touches almost 87% of the students who will have enrolled in one of these top 50 courses. We looked at a five-year trend and spread to see if these rates were going up, going down, or remaining static. That was important to us because we had a pesky little global pandemic in there, and we needed to see where were the students performing going into that, what happened in the middle, and where are we at this point in time? Most courageously, we disaggregated that data so that we could see how students perform in accordance to their racial, ethnic grouping, their Pell eligibility, whether they are low-income or whether they don't receive Pell, by age group. So you have dual enrollment students under the age of 18, through adult learners in different age groups, by gender, and even by modality. Did the student take these courses online, face-to-face, in a hybrid format, in a live without the drive format? And by doing that, we were able to identify where achievement, or frankly, equity gaps might emerge. These are some of the tactics, some of the actions that we have already put in place that are trying to close those achievement and equity gaps where we have found them. And let me just honor my colleagues who have been working in every program at this college in Academic Affairs to tackle these, because every program has its own Gateway Course. Big umbrella division-wide, we're partnering with the John N. Gardner Institute as the first community college involved in a national program to study courses and curriculum in urban ecosystems. So they asked us, as a large Midwestern Detroit-based, urban-centered college, to look not only at these Gateway Courses, but how students perform on the curriculum pathways that lead not only to our degrees, but transfer then to the four-year schools. And I coaxed our next-door neighbors, the University of Michigan Dearborn, to go through this with us. So now, when we look at Gateway Courses in Biology, Criminal Justice, Psychology, we're figuring out what the student experience was in their first semester here and how that predicts their success at the end of the game as they walk out the door, having followed curriculum pathways in areas such as these. We launched a College 102 course, free. It's available 24/7/365 online via Moodle for all of our students. And embedded in there are video tutorials that help students not only navigate online courses at this college, but have access to study skill information, thinking about self-defeating behaviors and overcoming those things, good, strong, healthy study habits. We just made all of that available to our students at their fingertips. And we're working to increase faculty training and use of our early alert system so that when we do see a student who might be wobbling on that balance beam, we can instantly engage our colleagues in student affairs, the advisors, the counselors, specialists that can help get our students back on track. In Health and Human Services, they're working collectively to create a first-year experience course that any student... course that any student expressing an interest in healthcare would take. There would be career exploration and it would be tailored success strategies for students following pathways in nursing, respiratory therapy, any of, of the health career areas. Pre-education has actually revised and restructured their curriculum pathways embedding experiential learning outcomes. In other words, rather than always having high-stakes assessments where students are taking tests, we're trying to give them learning experiences where it's all about doing and then from that experience, we can deduce how well they are mastering the competencies in the gateway courses. That is a very, very high-end practice on being able to do that. More work for the teachers. In Liberal Arts, they've launched and are integrating an online annotation tool called Hypothesis and, and of course with this dot IS, it's, it's kind of a little play on, on the word hypothesis, but we're using it in big, multi-section, high-enrollment courses like the First Semester English Composition Course, Psychology, Criminal Justice 131. These help students to build and improve their reading skills and their critical thinking skills. If we can do that within the content of those courses, they can carry those skills through then to be successful in any of the courses they take further down the line. They've partnered with the Library and Academic Support Systems to act, uh, Support Services staff to build just-in-time newly-developed information literacy instruction so students understand how not to fall into the trap of misrepresenting their work or committing fraudulent acts like plagiarism. In many cases, it's that inability to stay away from the electric fence that results in a non-achievement grade in a gateway course and could set the student on a downward spiral. So we want to be able to work with them as much as we can. The library also, in terms of the Learning Lab, have set up tutorial services through NetTutor that allows tutoring in many of these gateway courses online 24/7/365. STEM, they are not slackers. In STEM, they know that they have some high DEWI rate courses. I was a music major, I had to take science courses, it's not generally a good idea. I used to advise music students too. You're going to have to take a science class with a lab. Let me recommend something like Chemistry and Society. In my mind, that was like, don't drink bleach and you'll be able to do it, but I've, I've since learned that it's actually a hard class. So, how do we prepare people? Well, in Biology and Chemistry, they've adopted OERs with inclusive access. Understand what this means. Students can, before the class even starts in the semester, have access to their textbooks, all of their instructional materials. They'll have them for the duration of the semester, free of charge, available 24/7 for the whole period. We've added supplemental instruction, having peer students act as tutors by sitting in the class with the students and then following up, one-to-one or in small groups at times that can be arranged after the class. Those are just some of the strategies that they're doing. Math, set up a math coach position that starts by making sure that the student is on the right, I like to use the word "mathway" instead of pathway. If you're going to be a business major, don't be on this math way that's going to be a forced march through calculus, let's get you in a statistics pathway. Let's get you in a quantitative reasoning, math for the modern world if you're going into a field such as music. Getting on the right pathway is only half of it. Developing healthy and effective study skills, building supports, reaching out to at-risk students, all of that is going on. Pre-engineering has instituted pathway orientations so that, again, students have a way, an on-ramp into this area of study that is all about building the right skills to be successful. Even out there, courses, many of them are offered now out at the East Campus, they've worked with Student Affairs to provide group advising, counseling, career development sessions. We've implemented project-based curriculum so that students can demonstrate their learning, again, in authentic ways rather than high-stakes exams. We hope that all of these will be paying off. And so how will we know if that is happening? Well, we'll be in a position, right after the grades are due on the 19th of December, to look at Fall '21, Fall '22 for decreased DEWI rates in the gateway courses for the top 25 enrolled courses. We'd be looking for increased use of the faculty, using that early alert system. Right now, 33% of the faculty do. We want that to 50% by the end of the year and we want to see increased student access to and use of the Learning Lab and tutoring, especially NetTutor that makes it available free at your fingertips. I'm going to pause there before we go to the next piece. Technically, it's a separate presentation, but are there any questions about what these DEWI rates are? And again, I'm just giving you some highlights of the many ways that we're working to move that needle in the right direction.
Trustee Thor.
What is the feeling with the group about what's going to happen with the DEWI rates? You think you're going to achieve it?
Yes. I, I think that we will see, there are some areas that we kind of expect to see a slight upward tick before a very significant downward turn. And here, down is good, up is bad. So, the reason why we see that happening is that with Michigan Reconnect, we completely revolutionized our thinking around, we don't even use this term anymore, what used to be called developmental education or remediation. What we've done now in writing, in arithmetic or mathematics, is in the one, in the writing area, we've done accelerated learning program approach so that instead of students taking a developmental writing course or two and then getting finally into that freshman comp class, we're putting them into the freshman comp class with, in a sense, that's the motorcycle that they're, that they're riding and there's a sidecar attached to it that is providing the just-in-time necessary support and reinforcement of learning to get them through in one semester what used to be a full year of a developmental followed by a gateway course. Because of that, we're seeing students in those ALP sections that would not heretofore have ever been in a, starting in a, in a Writing 131 class. And so we expect that as we get better at doing this and as students begin to sense that these accelerated learning pathways are really built for their success, we'll probably see that go up a little bit, but then my experience, having done this years ago at Lansing Community College and then again at Washtenaw, is that the dividend will pay off within, within, by the time our strategic plan comes up for, for, you know, review and review, we should already see us, us making ground there. In mathematics, we do it with prerequisite courses. So a student is going to take that gateway math course, but they're also going to take what was once a developmental course. Instead of them being one semester followed by the next, they're happening simultaneously and the window as to where students actually migrate from the one to the other is so blurry, no one sees it. It happens as the students move in a more competency-based approach and we've already seen students in one semester achieving what they used to take almost their entire two years to do in mathematics. We are leading the way. Henry Ford College's name comes up at the, at the, the nation's Dana Center as, as really out there, leading the state of Michigan in some of this work.
Trustee Barry.
That's not a question, but a comment earlier today at Wayne State, I heard multiple speakers talk about student retention and we always concentrate on support inside the classroom, but there also, as mentioned earlier, support outside the classroom. I know we do a good job there. What I'm referring to is students experiencing hunger, transportation issues, babysitting issues.
Yeah. You know, I, I glanced over because I wanted to, to keep on time and it was wrong of me, so thank you for pointing it out. An example of that is in, in Liberal Arts where we are building our ability to reach more students and get them more involved in those kind of academic plus social support groups, like the Blackmail and Queens Focus Group or with Saga. So we're working with special population of students for whom that's comfortable, they lead that way, and, and we can create cohorts that then move together, you know, through, through school. That is, again, high-impact practice and you're absolutely right. The connecting them to resources that will help with housing issues, food insecurity, what do I do when I'm faced with DTE is turning off my electricity? And a lot of that work is happening in a related initiative to all of this that is building those kinds of emergency mini-grants to, to stand up our students and keep them in the game. But you're absolutely right. Those supports are critical, sometimes actually they are more important.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. The current look at Henry Ford College's transfer picture is that we're nearing 60% of our students choose to come here to transfer, to actually accomplish a higher degree, usually a bachelor's degree, at another institution. And having done the deep dive in this as part of our work for the strategic plan, we've done quite a lot around priority number four because we don't usually pay much attention in community colleges to transfer students. We see them as kind of migratory, they're passing through, they're going to grab what they want and as soon as they can affect the transfer to the school, they'll eventually call their alma mater, they're out the door. We're flipping that script entirely because the student that does that forfeits, forfeits tens of thousands of dollars. They, they take on unbelievable debt to take courses that we have a better rate of success in teaching. So, in, in, in this priority, I draw your attention really to both of, of the goals. One, to increase the number of transfer to four-year schools, and that's important just a bit, and then to make sure that our students are accomplishing a credential at Henry Ford College before they actually leave us. Just a sneak peek, you can see Henry Ford College all the way to the left. The blue bar is our graduation rate for, for one of our credentials, a certificate or a degree. That red bar is that transfer out to, to, to other schools. As you look across schools that we might measure ourselves against because of size, scope, and mission, we have the highest rate of students that are doing that. In fact, when we look at the, the percentages, we are, are much higher than even Lansing Community College that actually has a very high transfer out rate. Henry Ford College, Jackson, and Schoolcraft, the first three, just so you know, we have to measure ourselves as four-year institutions. So in order to get this data, I actually have to look at students that started here in 2015. So we want to make sure that when we look at this data, we go beyond the simple numbers to understand what it's really trying to tell us. When we look at that, you can see that students are transferring successfully, at least in their mind, by the thousands. So here's a sneak peek at our students from academic year 17, 18 to academic year 21, 22. So we're right up almost to the current day. When we look at that aggregate of all those five years in there, the number one transfer school in, in total volume is Nextdoor University of Michigan Dearborn, but Wayne State University has an enormous draw of our students and in the last two years, more of our students have gone to Wayne State University than any other college. So this afternoon's celebration is one that is very, very timely. Note a few things that you're seeing here. Beyond the University of Michigan and Dear, and Wayne State, where, where, you know, 4,500 of our students have transferred in the last five years, notice that the next two institutions are two-year schools. Now that's not always a good thing. When students are transferring from criminal justice program at Henry Ford College to then go to the Police Academy at Schoolcraft, that's an awesome thing. We do that really well. But when they leave us and we find them next on the campus at Wayne County Community College or they're not in one of those beyond our certificate programs at a, a Schoolcraft or at Oakland Community College or a Washtenaw or a McComb, the, these are not what I consider successful transfer. We need to dig in and find out why would you trade in what a hawk can have for what some other animal, you know, might be, might be flying around being able to do. The other thing that you'll see is that the students that are transferring from us to a four-year school are doing so with incredible GPAs. In most of these cases, the GPAs are over a 3.2. That's very high. Students that are going to the two-year schools sometimes are leaving with GPAs that have not even reached a passing level. So what is Learn Forwards all about? The vision that, that we brought to this was that you should be able to seamlessly navigate from Henry Ford College to one of these four universities, the University of Michigan Dearborn, Wayne State University, Eastern Michigan University, or Davenport. Now that one might be like, "One of these things is not like the other," from, from our, you know, Sesame Street days. Over 85% of our students that transfer go to U of M, Dearborn, Wayne State, or Eastern. Davenport is there because we've worked out with Davenport that they will accept any and every associate degree from Henry Ford, meaning those non-transfer associate degrees are also accepted for a full 60-credit ride that will give you the first two years with junior standing to complete a bachelor's degree and all of the bachelor's degrees that we've signed down with Davenport are completable 100% online without your ever leaving Dearborn. Okay? So that's what makes that different. Let's jump in. Learn Forward highlights. These were the things that we just got down and dirty and said, you know what? Pushing the third decade of the 21st century, this is what Henry Ford College Hawks deserve. Guaranteed admission to the four-year school. In most cases, a 2.5 is all our students need in order to be transferring with good standing. Guaranteed transfer of at least 60 credits, built-in HFC credential prior to the transfer. It is part of the pathway. You do your associate degree and then you finish the bachelor's degree. AANAS degrees come pre-baked with the Michigan Transfer Agreement, all met. Clear and accessible and achievable academic and career pathways that you can chart from your first class at Henry Ford to the last course that you take as your senior capstone at one of these schools. With the folks that we just were with this morning down on their campus in Detroit, that is all mapped out online. A student can actually see in one place, interactively, there's everything from day one at HFC through my diploma ceremony at Wayne State University. No extraneous extra courses, no credits left behind. Advising from the four-year school to our students while they're still here after 30 credits. Free access to the university's library and resources associated with research, academic support services, and career and employment services. We want our students to be able to use those while they're still enrolled at Henry Ford College. Free access to educational, cultural events, sports, recreational events, student clubs, and organizations. sports, recreational events, student clubs and organizations, including honors programs. A tuition freeze for the three years that you'll spend with us. We hope you'll do it faster. We need you to do it in three years. Because as you know, IPeds only allows us to consider a person a completer at Henry Ford College if they can do so in 150% of the time. A two-year degree, we're granted a grace period of three years to get that work done. Transfer students can qualify for special scholarship opportunities up to and including free tuition is the deal we have next door with U of M Dearborn. And finally, there are additional incentives for students that participate in our honors college or our honor society Phi Theta Kappa. The backbone of this was our being able to convince the four-years, and this was tough, to completely rethink an associate degree, not as a terminal degree, but as a transfer pathway that is so simple. I called it success in 60. 30 credits, Gen Ed, the MTA will be in our degrees. 15 credits will be in the concentration that the student will declare as their major when they get to you. And the other 15, we will work out together. There's the menu. As long as a student is picking off that menu, all 60 credits transfer. We got all four of these institutions. Our one institution with Wayne State to buy into this. By the way, this is now the model that they're using in Michigan Community College Association as Michigan transfer pathways. Jenny and Erica stole this from me. And we didn't stop there. We can't just do two-plus-twos. We, as a P-14 district, have the unique opportunity, and I think responsibility, for doing two-plus-two-plus-two pathways to transfer success. 11th and 12th grade are collegiate academy. HFC completes that associate's degree, the college has already guaranteed your admission. And maybe, since I remember being able to microchip my last little poodle, if we can microchip a poodle, we could probably microchip a student in 11th grade and say, "If you are interested in being a Wolverine of the future, if you are a warrior in the making, we can get you there seamlessly and start working with you before you are really on your way out of 10th grade." Finally, saving time and money. This is what it's all about. If you were a University of Michigan Dearborn student paying in-state tuition and you would commit to the block tuition assessment, that means you're going to pay one price, like you do at Cedar Point. That one price, 12 or more credits, is 69, 60 a term. Times four terms means that to get your 120 credits for your bachelor's degree as a native student, you will pay $55,680 just in tuition. We haven't talked about fees, books, anything else. At Henry Ford College, tuition, if you are an in-district student paying $108 a credit, 60 credits to an associate's degree. Remember, success in 60 is no more, no less than 60 credits. Fees not included, it's going to cost you $64.80 for your entire ride. That means a Learn Forward HFC to U of M Dearborn student will pay a combined tuition for an associate's degree and a bachelor's degree if they complete it in six years or less of $34,320, which is actually $21,360 cheaper than if you'd done the whole thing at the University of Michigan to start with. That saves money for students. That saves money for parents. That saves money for our learning community. That eventually saves money that people turn back around and invest in our communities. How do we measure our progress? Again, our success is measured by the success of our students. Here, we'll be looking at winter '22 to winter '23 enrollment in Learn Forward programs. That would be U of M Dearborn, but now we can add Wayne State. We just launched it today. Eastern's conversations are happening in January, and Dearborn is ready to, I mean, Davenport is ready to sign. Increased number of successful transfers to four-year students, institutions. That is our goal right from our own strategic plan. We're going to decrease the number of transfers to two-year institutions if we can better understand why students are choosing that. We want to increase the percentage of students that complete their HFC credential before they transfer. And we should see an increase in GPAs for transfer-out students. In the end, the work that we're trying to do in these areas on our strategic plan is to move the farthest, the fastest, for the most number of students. And we are not the only ones doing it. That is the heart and soul of what 60 by 30 is all about. That's my story. Sorry, it went a little bit long, but, you know, Russ teed me up. So... Are there any questions that I can answer about Learn Forward? What we're doing with that and...
Trustee Watts.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I just wanted to say thank you to you and your team. Because I think what we're doing, what you're doing is creating a foundation of generational change. So as a first-generational student, I just want to say thank you because I think this will have ripple effects for generations to come. So thank you so much for all of your hard work in this.
Thank you. My team is a little bit tired of hearing me say that all we need is to change everything. That is the definition of transformational change. And we need transformational leaders to do it. What works well with that, though, is that you can't be a transformational leader and get transformational change unless you start with changing here first. So this is all about Henry Ford College calling out what we can do, and we can do better. You know, I think of these as pathways, and I'll leave you with this thought because someone was asking me about it just earlier today. And I used a rather tired analogy of the Yellow Brick Road and the Wizard of Oz. And I said, "Here's the thing. Most people believe that the Wizard of Oz, what was all about getting to the Emerald City. It's a mad rush to get to the Emerald City." And in fact, a lot of students, I think, think of college as that. "That's that job that I really want. That's that credential that I really want to earn. Okay, that's the education that I want to amass." But if you really go back and play that movie through in your head, what did these folks that made it to the Emerald City really get that they didn't already have? Everything they already had. Some things Emerald City sent them back out to get a broomstick of a wicked witch of the West, like that was going to be the measure of your success. And in the end, it was discarded. It was useless. So these pathways that we're creating at this college right here, right now, are sending the message, it's not about the Emerald City. It will always be about the Yellow Brick Road. Now, I'm talking from the environs still of Munchkinland. I'm on a Yellow Brick Road, too. And I know that they come with witches hurling balls of fire and trees throwing rotten apples, and occasionally flying monkeys. All of that is going to happen along the way. But guess what? If you're a hawk, we're there every step with you, now, all the way through to the completion of a bachelor's degree. Thank you all for just the honor and the privilege to do this work.
Trustee Barry.
I also want to say thank you and your team for all the work that you do. And Dr. Inley, thank you for your passion, for the work and being a hawk. This is the season, so I'm going to spice things up a little bit. Earlier today, I'm going to make a statement, give me an opportunity to clarify before... President Cavalluna earned a title earlier today, Pester of the Year. So I'll give you a chance to explain. When Dr. Wilson was explaining how this, you know, this transfer came about, he used the word pestering, that Russ was pestering him. What I heard him say, that President Cavalluna was persistent, liked to energize upon her. Wouldn't stop, wouldn't stop until, you know, this agreement took place. So if you have to pester people, Russ, we're right there with you. So thank you, appreciate you.
I want to add something, too. Amazing, amazing work from you and your whole team. Amazing passion. And a lot of these things, because we're thinking of them differently, we're addressing issues that people on this board, who have been here for a length of time, have been issues that we've addressed before, or at least have been brought up before. And now I finally see, wow, this, I believe with my heart, is going to make a difference and it's really going to work. So thank you for that.
Oh, thank you for your support.
Appreciate it, absolutely.
Yeah, I know, there's a team that has worked just tirelessly. Because we believe in this strategic plan because first and last, we believe in our students.
And looking at things differently, just like the student that was here earlier, when you think outside of the box and you look at things differently, you get a whole new perspective. So thank you. Godspeed with your work and we appreciate everything that you and your teams all across the college are doing.
Thanks.
Mr. McDonald, just a quick follow-up to that. It's not just the issues that we're addressing, issues that we lived. Tyrone Carter, who's a graduate of Henry Ford College, and I were talking earlier, we lived this. I mean, we both have associate's degree from Henry Ford College. When we went to transfer, we probably lost a little over 30 credits when we finally transferred. So this is great work.
Students can easily hemorrhage north of 34% of their credits when they transfer from a two-year to a four-year school. And that's if you're going public to public. If you go public to private, you could lose almost 90% sometimes. So we're just not having it anymore. As far as thinking out of the box, my team's tired of my saying this all the time, too. I said, "You know what? Out of the box isn't good enough, guys. We need to believe in a world that doesn't even do cardboard anymore."
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Next item, please.
Discussion items. Technology Investment Fund. Fall 2022 Proposed Projects. Board Report Number 4667. Vice President Zetkowski.
But it's two projects, board members, regarding TIF Technology Investment Committee and Funds for the fall of this year. Initially, I came up with three projects, and I'm substituting tonight. You're probably wondering where Bob James is. Well, got to do with me tonight. Professor James. But, because he is the chair of the committee. So they reviewed three projects and are recommending two for tonight. One related to the library functionality and some very flexibility of use in the library. Cheaters on here. With regards to literacy, information literacy within the library. Those computers would be available 7:24 during the entire, well, during the entire day, charged up, different classes being offered. And I'm not sure, is Tessa here? Is the library board here tonight to talk about it?
No, I don't see her.
Okay, all right. So anyway, this is one of the projects that was approved. They've been looking at this for a couple of years. COVID put this on the back burner for a couple of years. But now they're looking at information literacy within the library, how to do searches, et cetera, with regards to bringing up a library in order to the digital world that it is. So that was project number one. Again, out of TIF funds. TIF funds are collected during the semesters and they're here. I believe you may have just updated that proposal, that policy, just recently for TIF, from what I've read from the minutes from the last meeting. The second proposal deals with something very similar to what we did a few meetings, a number of meetings back. And that is with hybrid teaching within classrooms, synchronous, asynchronous, direct display of the instructor in different classes. We're taking it towards student services and student support. So that can now be done within the Welcome Center, within the three conference room areas that are divided, within the Welcome Center equipment with that equipment, and then four other rooms within the Welcome Center, one on the first floor, three on the second floor, I believe. Nicole is here to answer any specific questions with regards to that project. But that's very similar to the classroom one, the classroom that we did about three months ago to upgrade those rooms so that students have that capability to not only attend, but also to do a face-to-face environment for different enrollment services, financial aid, anything that relates to classes that we can offer both face-to-face and... Any questions on either one of those?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Action Items. Citizen Participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items for Action and have submitted a blue card by 6:10 to the Secretary and may speak at this time. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees, and please limit. The first person, Linda Lance, would like to come to speak to the Board about a five-day return to work.
While Ms. Lance is coming up, I just want to say that we received a blue card late. We are going to accept it because our general acceptance is 10 minutes after the meeting starts. This meeting started at 6:00. We usually say we'll accept it till 7:10, so I will accept them until 7:10. So thank you very much. Please go ahead.
Good evening, board members. President Cavallino. I want to take three minutes. I'm Linda Lance and I, I think I can say whatever. I work in the Financial Aid Department. I've been working there for at least 10 years. And I just wanted to voice my concern in regards to the return to work for all five days to the college. Right now, we have the best of both worlds. We have employees that want to work all five days, and then there's ones that don't. Now, one thing about the effects of the pandemic, it gave people time to reflect and think about their life and how they want to live it. And the mentality used to be where it was work first, then family. But now the script has kind of flipped, and some people just have refused to return to the workforce. Now, overall, as long as I've been here, I have never seen the highest amount of turnover that we've had with employees right now. And others are saying that if they are forced to return back for all five days, that they will resign. And because they know they do have other opportunities at other places where they do offer some type of remote work. And it's not because we're here because we have to be here. We know that we have other options. But we're here because we want to be here for the continuance and the success of the students as well as the college. Now, even with our numbers, if you look, the enrollment is up. And even during a pandemic, our numbers continued to stay up. We didn't miss a beat because we were not here. But we did what we had to do for the students. We showed up for them and we made sure that we were doing it, whether it was by Zoom or just pre-arranging times for them to meet face-to-face for those who really wanted it. And we're not saying that there's complete remote or nothing. We're willing to compromise, but just not all five days. And even with maybe having one day out of the week that we can all commit to be here, so that way we can have that face-to-face interaction where we can, like the president wants, to make sure that we are able to meet with each other and get that connections that we need in order to make the campus what we want it to be. Winter is here and COVID is increasing. Those numbers are increasing, as well as the RSV that's attacking the children. With winter, that's our season where we have most sick, sick days are used. There's call-ins. days are used. There's call-ins. With this, at least, with we have some remote times, we'll be able to reduce the amount of sick times and call-ins that we have, as well as even reducing the amount of accidents that could happen, because we're in Michigan, just traveling back and forth. That can help. So, I just want to make sure that if we continue to have, to come back at five days, the people, the employee morale will be suffered, because people will not come back. And the people that are here, they will have to work harder, and then they will, they will have to work longer hours, which means overtime will have to be paid to them, because they will try and go elsewhere. So, I'm just asking if you could please cancel the five-day return to work, so that way, if you don't do it for us, at least do it for the students, for them to have a successful time here and their experience.
Thank you for sharing your concerns.
Next, Nancy Nick would like to come to speak to the Board about the work environment for remote work.
Good evening, Board Trustees, President Cavallino. My name is Nancy Nick. I work at the Welcome Center. So, three days a week, I am at the concierge at the front desk. Two days a week, I'm on Zoom at home. I used to be five days a week. They have cut it down to two days now, which I'm sure you'll be hearing from students, because there is a student, her name is Lena. She's starting a petition because she'd like to have Zoom back five days a week. So, that just started last week. We, so, when I'm on campus, it's very hard to do drop-in Zoom, okay? There's so much noise going on. My colleagues are next to me talking. There's footsteps, people walking past. They're like, hey, Nancy, oh, you're on Zoom, I'm sorry. There's a closet right by me that's constantly, the doors are shutting in and out. Students even think that maybe I have a television going on behind me, because there's so much noise. I can't focus and concentrate on what the students need when I'm on campus doing it. Also, it is extremely cold at the Welcome Center. We have, for months, asked facilities. We have heaters. We have blankets. We have hand warmers. I mean, you'll come and see gloves, hats on staff, because it is so cold there. When I'm at home, I can focus more on what, there's no distractions around me. I don't hear the noise. I can focus on students. Friday, just this last Friday, I had sixty-five students come in. I never even took a lunch, okay? From eight forty-five until four-ten, I stayed on Zoom with those students. Two of our advisors, Charles Jackson and Troy Gibson, stayed on, and we went through our lunch, and we helped those students, because there are no appointments for advisors. So, people are constantly coming on Zoom. So, we're, you know, we are dedicated to these students. We want to see them succeed. We want to get them into their classes, you know, change their programs, whatever it is they need. It's just, my concern is, coming back five days, what is the environment of the Welcome Center going to be? Because right now, please, come visit it. Invite you to come visit it. It is not conducive to being on Zoom, doing phone calls, doing walk-ins with everything around there. So, that is, that is my concern. Fine, bring us back, that's okay? I mean, I've asked a manager. They said, we're going to put you in an igloo. And I'm like, an igloo? It's already cold in here, you know? We're going to put a tent over you. We're going to put a piece of material over you. I still don't have an answer, and maybe the gentleman over here had said something about the Welcome Center, you know? Maybe they could show us what the facility is going to look like, you know, how we're going to be able to be, maybe the soundboards or something around us. But that's my concern. That's why working with the students, helping them, I'd rather be at home those days I'm on Zoom, just because of the distractions here on the campus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Cynthia Smith would like to come and address the Board about taking calls in the same room as helping in-person students. Students can hear conversation via like urba, and only three people work in the environment there. Cynthia?
Please, I have a question about the question.
Okay. I think I just shared what they had. Next, Ashley Cheers would like to come to speak to the Board about being more work at HFC.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ashley Cheers, and I'm one of the academic advisors in the Welcome Center. I'm a resident of Dearborn, and I'm a student here at HFC. And today, I'd like to express my disappointment with the college's decision to make Student Affairs staff return five days a week. We're all here to serve students, but by removing hybrid work, we're also going to remove some of the services that we're here to offer. We're going to lose flexibility to serve our students. Currently, I work from home two days a week, and I work on campus three days a week. My workday on campus ends at four-thirty, and I'm constantly getting requests to accommodate students who work until five or six PM. When I'm working from home, I'm able to split up my eight-hour workday and help those students that need later appointments. I do not have that flexibility from campus. We're also going to lose the opportunity to offer virtual services late at night during peak hours. Right now, enrollment services and advising occasionally host after-hours Zoom sessions. The last one that I was involved in, we stayed online until nine PM. I had no problem doing that, because I was working from home. Once we return five days a week, you're not going to find staff willing to work in the Welcome Center until nine PM and then commute home. Instead, our normal working days are going to end during normal business hours. We also are going to lose the ability to address student concerns in a quiet and private environment. Our cubicles are not designed to give us a chance to discuss sensitive information with students without other students hearing it. When I'm on the phone at work, I'm constantly hearing from students that they can hear noise in the background, or on Zoom, they can see other students walking by. Finally, the college has not addressed the benefits of remote work, such as employee morale, productivity, overall mental health, and employee retention. We're an institution of higher learning, yet the message that we're receiving is that we will not adapt to the world that we're in today. We have to look at remote work as a new opportunity, and not as a threat. I'm urging the college to reconsider their stance on remote work.
Thank you.
Next, Leslie Winless would like to speak to the Board about remote work.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leslie Winless, and tonight I will be speaking as an HFC employee. I've tried everything in my power to get this body to not be a rubber-stamp group, to ask questions, to back their support staff at the college, to be the servant leaders I see you are in the K-12 School Board meetings, to no avail. I don't know what took me so long, but I decided to hand it over to my God. And through His grace, I'm here just as Leslie. You may have noticed that you approved the leave of absence for me at your last meeting, but my guess is you didn't know why. It states in our quote, "Clients experiencing traumatic flashbacks, disassociative episodes, and significant emotional deregulation. Emergence of symptoms appear to be work-related stressors." Your employees are human beings, not machines. We are humans with everyday lives outside of HFCs, lives that are impacted by the decisions you make here every day. When you think about the humans on the other side of your decisions, then that, then, and only then, is when you could call yourself a servant leader. Like most working mothers, my work schedule dictates the time I spend with my family, childcare schedules, expenses, my husband's schedule, and most importantly, our family's routine. Did you know that even up to this past semester of fall, I didn't know what my work schedule would be until the week before the semester started? It was like that every single semester since March of 2020. Did you know that Student Affairs staff was required to purchase equipment to work from home? I tallied my receipts. The total was one thousand six hundred eighteen dollars and eleven cents. All of this for a home office that this administration has all of a sudden decided will no longer be used. Do you know that I do not make one thousand six hundred eighteen dollars and eleven cents in a two-week work period? How many of you have witnessed an advising appointment? Do you know that advising appointments are more private in a work setting? How many of you have been to the second floor of the Welcome Center? Do you know that none of them, not one employee on the second floor, sees students in person? Have you seen an employee's satisfaction survey in the last three years? Has one even been done? How much have these unilateral decisions by cabinet negatively impacted the relationship between their employees and their direct supervisors? Do you know how many people have quit in the last three years citing remote work as the primary reason for leaving? Do you know how many employees are also Dearborn residents and taxpayers? If you don't know the answer to these questions, then your concern is really not student satisfaction. It's definitely not employee satisfaction, and it couldn't be about passing a millage. Black women and minority groups have historically been silenced in spaces like this, and it's even easier to do it when neither population is present at either of your decision-making tables. I challenge you all to the opportunity not to pass up on equity to appease egos. I know that I'll be on the bright side of history when this story is told twenty years from now. That's why I will back and support any employee who refuses to do remote service work from campus starting in January, and will be on the front line of any protest, even if it's classified as a strike. Thank you for your time.
Next, June Williams would like to speak to the Board about modes of communications for students on campus, phone, Zoom, and remote on phone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is June Williams, and I work in the Welcome Center at the Call Contact Center. I'm, I'm here to represent the SSA and all the employees at the Welcome Center. I agree with everyone that has already stood up and spoke about remote work. But not only am I interested in remote work, I'm interested in all modes of communication. I am also a student, and I'm not only talking to the students on the phone via Zoom in person, I'm in the classrooms with them, too. I hear what the students say, and they like the, the different modes that we have to communicate with the students and be there with the students on all levels. Just like we have a panel of board members, each of you brings something different and special and unique to this Board, and so does the different modes of communication that we have with our students. Now, yes, those student, those employees who need to be here on campus five days a week, yes, they should be here on campus, like my security, like my people who do the staff work in the cafeteria, facilities, yes. But those employees who have no contact on-campus presence can and should do their work in other modes. I believe that the campus have not only increased as financially, I know the millage is probably one of your way of trying to get us back on campus, but I believe you, Henry Ford, can be the college of the century if we continue on campus. Zoom, telephone, hybrid, remote, I think with all those, you increase your leverage with students, not just here in Dearborn, but all over the state and outside the state and across the country. So, I believe if you continue that modality of the different ways you can communicate, because I know enrollment is what drives Henry Ford. If enrollment drives Henry Ford, then you need to continue the five, six different ways we can communicate and get students in, because not every, before COVID, yes, we needed to be here. That's all we know. But we have been educated, and God has given us the experience and the knowledge to increase our ways of expanding our, our abilities and our enrollment. So, for those students, for those employees who want to be here and need to be here, yes. But for those employees who need, who can still reach students outside of, on campus, that ability should make Henry Ford the best school possible, because all I hear students say, oh, I love Henry Ford, because I can go on Zoom. I can be at home. I can take care of my kids. I tried to get a student to come in this evening. She was like, I can't. I have a special needs. And I just want you to be sensitive to not just the immediate millage and the immediate bore, but the faces of Henry Ford.
Thank you.
Outside. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams, I just have a question for clarification. You mentioned you were speaking on behalf of the SSA. Are you an elected representative of the?
Oh, no, I'm not.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome. But I'm just a member.
I understand.
So, I am speaking as a member.
No, no, I, I took notes. I understand everything you were saying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Are there any action items on this agenda which Board members or the President wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude them from the action items below.
Anyone? No, I'm not seeing any. One thing I just want to make a correction. Under item number two, Human Resources, the date, the start date is incorrect. It says January seventeenth. It should be January ninth.
Recommended action, move to approve action items numbered one through four as recommended in this agenda.
So, vote.
Support.
We have a motion by Trustee Thorpe and supported by Trustee D'Ambrogio. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrogio?
Yes.
Trustee Moser?
Yes.
Trustee Peschakoff?
Yeah.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes. Next item, please.
Board of Trustees Business: Acknowledgements of Correspondence.
Anyone? I can't offhand think of anything that we've received.
Next, Board Committee Reports. Policy, I guess I'll go first. Policy Committee met earlier today. A few items. They will be updating our blue cards, just to add additional information onto those blue cards. The other one is that we received a legal opinion regarding the Opens Meeting Act and citizen participation. That opinion, legal opinion, will be emailed out to everybody, and you'll see red line items, so make note of those. The other one, there'll be a policy that'll be sent around regarding overseas travel. I don't remember the policy number, but that will also be emailed out in January. And we also will, the committee will be receiving a comparison of the bylaws between the P-12 and the college, just to see whatever distinctions would be separate, just to make it so that we're clear of any distinctions between the bylaws. Policy will look at that, and then we'll send that out to everybody. And we went forward with, instead of following the operating manual from Berkeley, we instead decided to go with the one- or two-pager that was forwarded to us from the Illinois State School Board, with the idea that we'd have a Part A and a Part B. A Part A would kind of be a cheat sheet, so it would take all of the bylaws and give us a nice two-page summary. And then the second part would kind, would give us a location for our unwritten rules. So, it would kind of streamline the process, and then it'd give us a three- or four-pager.
And be more user-friendly.
So, today, we went through just the Code of Conduct, and went through, I think, I believe, ten of those bullet points, and just changed up some of the vernacular. So, that was what policy. Did I miss anything, Trustee Barry? I'm sorry, Trustee D'Ambrogio?
Okay. Were there any other committee meetings? Next item, please.
Requests for information and/or future agenda items.
Trustee Barry?
President Cavallino, I'd like to see an update on our marketing plan and our budget. I've been seeing a lot of social media advertisements, which I think is very helpful. And also, I do a lot of driving during the day. I've been seeing our billboards, more strategic locations, too. I know a few years ago, we approved an extra couple of dollars into the budget. See how that's working, please.
Yes, Trustee Barry, I'm glad you noticed that, and I'm happy to coordinate an update for you on that. And what I will do is coordinate the response to that request for information with a couple of different options, so you can think about which is most responsive. During the pandemic, Vice President DeLonge gave a recorded Zoom presentation on this that I know some trustees found useful to attend, but also some trustees found useful to be able to watch on their own time. I, too, have noticed, and I've seen community members comment about the strategically placed, and I think very clean and sharp, billboards you're seeing.
Yes.
In fact, one of the honor students who was sitting before you today is prominently featured on Northbound Telegraph. But another option would be to have a presentation here at the Board or a written presentation. So, contemplate which of those venues, or maybe each of them would give you the best response to your request, and certainly, Vice President DeLonge and I will work to answer your request. And you are correct. There was an increase in the marketing budget, and I'll get you that information also.
True. Thank you.
Trustee Peschakoff?
This is kind of to piggyback on Dr. Nealan's learn-forward in the This is kind of to piggyback on Dr. Nealan's learn forward in the Dewey. So yeah, you're going to have to take a note. I didn't want to ask, but something for us to look at. I would, I'm interested in knowing, has COVID and/or anything that we've been seeing moving forward impacted the amount of students and the demographics of the students who are still requiring those, what we now have as the combined gateway courses with, with the sidecar of, oh God, I'm, I'm having a surprise.
Co-curricular.
The co-curricular ones, especially if they're coming from the high schools in the surrounding communities. Are we getting better improvement on the numbers who are requiring those courses that, that don't earn any credits for them? Or is that improving at all as we move forward into this new process?
I can offer, if President Cavalluna wishes, a quick one minute or less. You know, I can drop an olive into your martini glass on this. You know, simply by saying, most of the courses, almost all of the courses that heretofore were developmental courses are no longer on the books at any or most community colleges in the state of Michigan. Some of that was pretty much legislated by Michigan Reconnect. We have taken steps to still make our priority meeting students where they are at and bringing them to the successful completion of that gateway course. So we, we don't see a drop-off of, of students at all. You just won't find them in courses that would have earmarked them.
As developmental?
Which frankly, I think we've learned over the last decade and a half in higher education, was perpetuating things that we didn't want to perpetuate.
Okay, so that's not really an identifiable demographic anymore amongst our student population?
What we can do is to, is to see if we can't find the demographics, and I'll look to, to Vice President Gonco's help here. The demographics of those students who are enrolling in those ALP or co-requisite models. And that is certainly notable.
Okay, that's what I would like to see. Thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Moses?
Thank you, Madam President. I had a question about the students who are transferring to nearby colleges or similar colleges to HFC. And I noticed the GPA to be very low compared to those students who are going to four-year colleges. But you mentioned that we will know the reasons or we're in the hunt for knowing the reasons why they're going there. Are those reasons to be researched now? Are those going to be reported to us sometimes?
If I may, the, the difficulty in understanding why students leave us and then say reappear in the National Clearinghouse at another two-year school can really only be, or best be deciphered upon their voluntary participation in our draft survey. So when students do leave, we follow up with those students, try to understand what it was that prompted them to make this decision. More and more, what we're trying to do is before they make a decision, be alerted to the fact that they're, they may be thinking of an alternative and staying through to be successfully choose with their goals here. And we reach out to them very proactively. I'll, I don't want to interrupt, so I'm going to flip to Vice President Gonco.
Why don't we, why don't we corral some of the information first?
That's a request for information, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
But I, I have the request, Trustee Moses, and we'll get you something.
Thank you.
Next item?
No, just a summary of the reasons.
Next item, please. Board Member Commentary. Anyone? One thing, well, two things actually I wanted to just mention. The Nurses' Penning Ceremony is this Friday and so I just wanted to remind everyone. I love that event. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend this Friday, but I wanted to give everyone the reminder, if you're able to. And if you haven't been, I think most of us have, it's a terrific event. And I think I neglected last meeting to thank Kevin Dewey for his work and his student musicians that they did at the Veterans Ceremony that took place on Veterans Day. So I wanted just to mention that. Anyone else? Yes, President Cavalluna?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Piggybacking on your comment about Kevin Dewey's work, I also want to thank, I believe, I missed Trustee Barry there just as I arrived later, but I believe Trustee Barry was at the Holiday Tea. I'm not sure about that, but Kevin Dewey's group also performed at the Holiday Tea, which is another wonderful thing we've now been able to come back together and do. And so I'll also be making an announcement about Kevin Dewey in, in the next couple of weeks. So I'm glad you brought him up. I also want to thank the board for approving action items. Two of them are of particular interest to me that I want to take the opportunity to introduce to you some of our new teammates. But before I do that, I want to say that the two positions are very, very important positions. One is the Director of Admissions and Recruiting and one is the Executive Director in the Offices of Human Resources. So let's start with the first, the Director of Admissions and Recruiting. That position reports to Vice President Rhonda DeLonge. And ordinarily, I'd have Rhonda DeLonge stand up right now, but you all know her so well. I do want, I do want to say that Vice President DeLonge was the last step in this process, but there was a search committee of diverse stakeholders for this very important position that was led by Delphine Davis. And of course, this entire process has been recently entirely reviewed, revamped, and improved for all kinds of best practices that were an entire work of the HR Department. But one of the main cogs in that process was Tracy Davis, who's in the back. And I will ask Tracy to, you guys have had her before you, but I do want you to stand up, Tracy, because this is, these announcements are a product of your work. So congratulations. The other search committee was chaired by Vice President Reginald Best. You know Reginald. I won't ask him to stand up because he's been before you so often. But that, that search committee developed a very competitive list that went on to Vice President Gonco for the Human Resources Executive Director. And Vice President Gonco ended up making the final selection there. So what we have here is two excellent new leaders. And for those of you on the board, I've circulated the resume of each of these wonderful new teammates. And I've asked them to come to the board meeting tonight and I'm glad they have. I'm not going to go on and on about them like I ordinarily would because you have more work to do as a board tonight. So what I will do for, for the entire community, but for my new colleagues, I want you to know that in the new year, when you're here working with us, I will make some time for the board to get to know you and probably for you to make a presentation in your leadership roles here at the college. But I, I'm not doing so tonight, just that the board can move on. But trustees, if we do get a minute before we shift gears as a board, I would encourage you to introduce yourself to these two new leaders because I'm proud to call them my teammates. I'm glad they're here and I, I really do appreciate your unanimous support of the decisions that Vice President DeLonge and Vice President Gonco made. And so first, I'll ask you each to stand individually. And, and part of us saying, "Welcome to the team," is have you stand and us applaud you. I hope that feels good. It may be a little bit awkward, but that's our way of kind of not physically hugging you, but hugging you and welcoming you to the team. So I'll start with the, the new Director of Admissions and Recruiting. That's Ms. Tracy Perry. Welcome to the team. And of course, our Executive Director for the Office of Human Resources, that's Lisa Bradley. As I say, trustees, if you can steal a second this evening, please do feel free to introduce yourself to them. I've done that just very briefly and I, I look forward for all of us benefiting from their leadership. And I appreciate you, Madam Chair, allowing me to make comments, even though I'm not a board member.
Absolutely. Trustee Barry?
I just want to take the opportunity to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a happy holiday season, and a happy new year. See everybody next year.
Anyone else? Next item, please.
Feature meeting dates. Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Organizational meeting, six forty-five, at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand twenty-two. P-12 Board of Education Meeting, seven P.M. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Saturday, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. HFC Board of Trustees Retreat, eight A.M. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom. Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, six P.M. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, seven P.M. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
Thank you. We are adjourned.